Has this meeting come to order? Commissioner Rocky Ford do the invocation and the pledge.
What we come to you today, ask you to have your hand under this beady, and give us the knowledge to make the best decisions for the county. We ask to have your hand on the first responders, our military overseas and at home. And we just ask for your blessings for each and every day. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all. All right, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We would like to do a brief on other technicality I don't know.
Okay, the update on the parcel?
Yes.
Any more?
I would like to add water problems in the Hill subdivision.
You want to do that where?
At the very end.
Have David.
Yours was the update on what, Kevin?
Beast property on the highway.
Okay.
Two fifty two minute, which has to have no due information.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Hello?
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Uh, all opposed, motion passes. All right, we got public hearings, Corbett, Alde. Hold it.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you again once again for having us. I am Corbett Alde. Regarding community resource management, our office is a city for the record. We are here tonight to have once again a first public hearing for a community development block grant program. The CDVG program is designed to benefit low and moderate income persons primarily. Can be used to remove slumming life and can be used in emergency situations like a hurricane. The primary benefit that CDVG can develop block grant funds is to benefit low and moderate income person. The categories that are available are include neighborhood revitalization, housing rehabilitation, and then commercial downtown revitalization. We're not eligible for any of those because we have an open ongoing housing rehabilitation grant. We are highly eligible for an economic development CDVG every year. So that's what we'll be focused on tonight. The economic development grant can be up to one point five million dollars. This is a federal fiscal funding year twenty twenty one. This is a double funding year. This year again actually applied for two separate grants this year and get both funded potentially. It's infrastructure primarily. We fund infrastructure for business. So we fund most of the town. We fund it water, sewer, roads, traffic lights, gas mains, cable, and those kinds of infrastructure including the business needs in order to create a job. The grant is based on job creation. So you need, we need one full time equivalent job for every thirty five thousand dollars a grant. For a grant of one point five million, that would be forty three jobs, for example. At least fifty one percent of the jobs must be made available to low and moderate income persons, people from low and moderate income household. And so that's your benefit for your CDVG national debt. Any questions? Um, you can, loans to the business are eligible but not recommended. They're complicated. Local government owned buildings are also eligible, but you have to charge an asset rent grant on those buildings to be approved on the CDVG. So that's why we reminded you mainly focus on infrastructure. And at this time, that's my presentation. I'm here for public comment next. And then your commission questions that you have.
I hereby open the public hearing on community development block grant FY two thousand twenty one or two thousand two twenty two. This is the first public hearing. Do I have anybody that wants to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Corbett, how many of these public hearings we got to have on this again?
Two.
Two, okay.
Yes.
So at the second public hearing, you will be bringing back specific projects.
Okay.
So anybody who has ideas on projects, and I'm just turning.
Okay.
I make a red, I make a motion to accept. Uh, block grant FY twenty twenty one and twenty and or twenty twenty two.
Sure.
We have a motion by Mr. Murphy and a second by Mr. Ford. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Next commissioners, we have a fair housing training that we do each time we do a new CDVG for points. They give us five points for having a fair housing, a training, fair housing workshop they call it during the commission meeting. The Fair Housing Act passed in nineteen sixty eight. Civil rights was established to protect people from discrimination when purchasing or renting a property as residents. County has a fair housing ordinance as well in this part of chapter seven sixty four statutes. It is illegal to discriminate based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or familial status when renting, selling, or financing a home or property. Who is not, usually when we talk about rural, it's helpful to those exceptions. Who is not protected? These things like your age, marital status, criminal history, source of income, these things can still be considered and evaluated if you rent a space to you or sell you a home. It also excludes an owner occupied building with under four units. So if you live in one unit and ran out the other two or three units in a one to four unit complex, you're exempt. Home sold or rented by owner as long as the issue is not homeowners free home title. Uh, housing development operated by organization or club, or housing developed at fifty five and over. Well, some examples of discrimination of fair housing would include steering, steering you to a certain neighborhood or certain area, making excessive requests for you to comply over and above others to qualify. Discrimination against you because you might have a handicap. You perceive not being able to pay for your rent or your mortgage. Obviously discrimination and outright discrimination on the base of your race or your religion or any of those. Out discrimination. And that concludes my fair housing training activity. I'm here for questions.
Any questions? I don't think there are any, Mr. Alde, you explained it perfectly.
Thank you very much. That's all needed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, sir.
Come on down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do you have a PowerPoint? Maybe not. So I'll make it real quick. First item I have is resolution twenty two, twenty twenty two R fifty one. Second public hearing fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two. It's the adoption of the military, seven point eight one five mil. Basically, it is the same military as last year. And all we ask is that you would have to read the resolution in two minutes and then approve resolution. If there are no objections, I'll read the resolution.
Okay.
Resolution number twenty twenty two R fifty one. A resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final levy levying of abnormal taxes for Columbia County for fiscal year twenty twenty three, providing for an effective date. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida on September twentieth, twenty twenty two, adopted fiscal year final number phrase, following a public hearing as required by the Florida statutes two hundred point six five. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida has held a public hearing required by the Florida statutes, twenty two hundred point oh six five. Whereas a gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempted taxation within Columbia County has been certified by the Columbia County Property Operation to the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners as three billion, five hundred and fifty eight million, one hundred and fifty nine thousand, zero, zero, six dollars. Uh, and then it can be now therefore be resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners that fiscal year twenty twenty three operating military will be seven point eight one five mil, which is more than the rollback rate of seven point two plus three mils, five point seven nine percent. And be true that the resolution will take immediately upon its adoption. And then finally be further resolved by the board that the final taxable value on the tax rule, as certified by the property officer, is at variance with the value initially certified more than one percent. The chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to adjust the above millage levies to bring the same funds as contained in the approved budget. At this point, um, if you could open it up to the floor for public comment.
Hereby open the public hearing on resolution, resolution two thousand twenty two R fifty one, setting the millage rate. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
I'm sure I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty two R fifty one.
Second, have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
The next item I have is a second public hearing on the adoption of the FY two oh two two dash two oh two three budget. Um, and again, um, you look at the agenda packets, since we don't have the overheads, we've provided you what those fundings are. The total funding is two hundred and fifteen million, two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars. We included a copy of the final budget, which includes all of the funds. And again, we are funded. We are, budget contains funds and each operation is approved by the fund that it's in. And then finally, the resolution that you will need to adopt. Um, if you'd like, you could open it to public hearing, and then after that, I can read the resolution for your adoption consideration.
Okay, I hereby open the public hearing on resolution two thousand twenty two R fifty two, adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty three budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak on it? Seeing no one, I hereby close the public hearing. Read the resolution, we can make a vote, or would you like us to vote?
I agree to the resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty two R fifty two. Resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three, providing an effective date. Whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on September twentieth, twenty twenty two, held a public hearing as required by Columbia statute two hundred point oh six five. And whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, set forth appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three in the amount of two hundred and fifteen million, two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty five. Now therefore be resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida that, one, the fiscal year twenty twenty three final budget as amended to be adopted. And two, this resolution will take effect immediately upon adoption. Duly adopted, a public hearing on the twentieth of September, twenty twenty two, and then upon adoption.
I'm sure I move to adopt, adopt twenty twenty two R fifty two. Fifty ten.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two ordinance for adoption hearing this evening, twenty twenty two dash ten and twenty twenty two dash one. Uh, twenty twenty two dash ten relates to a new mechanism for individuals who were trespassed by county officials to have an appeal process in case they disagree with the determination of the county official who was trespassing. So this is the same ordinance that was presented for the request for adoption hearing previously. And then it's been published. It hasn't changed in any way. Essentially, what this ordinance provides for is a proper definition of the offenses that can result in a trespass. So it provides clarity for county staff. And it also requires a procedural mechanism for appeal. That appeal is filed with this office, as they refer to the hearing officer. And basically it gives the citizen who's been told that can't come into county property an opportunity to challenge that shortly. Um, we've been assured by our outside counsel that assisted us with the recent trespass issue that this will tighten up any exposure we might have, if you would, to the federal court. So I am recommending adoption, but I would like for the chair to public hear to consider it public comment.
Hereby open a public hearing on adoption hearing for ordinance two thousand twenty two dash ten, trespass warning on county property. Would any like, one like to speak on that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty two dash ten.
We have a motion by Mr. Murphy and a second by Mr. Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, the next matter is ordinance twenty twenty two dash eleven. This ordinance implements amendments to county sexual offender and sexual predator codes. As I discussed at the meeting when we made the request for the adoption hearing, these changes were made at the request and in coordination with sheriff's office. As explained in the memo and as discussed last time, there were just some conflicts between our code and what state law requires. It was making things difficult on, at the enforcement level or the sheriff's office. And so these changes were prepared, presented to sheriff's office. There have been requests for changes since those were filed with the sheriff. And so we're asking for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty two dash eleven after public hearing.
Mr. Fulmer, this, uh, uh, sexual offender and sexual predator code are comprised with the following statutes.
Yes, sir. It makes it, it makes it match.
I hereby open public hearing on two thousand twenty two eleven amendments to sexual offender and sexual predator code. Would any like, anyone like to speak on that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty two dash eleven.
Have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Second. I'd like to have, on the consent agenda, I'd like to have number six pulled for discussion, please.
What do you want to do that at?
When?
The end.
Wherever.
What do you want to do at the end when Toby does his thing?
If you're gonna, you want to have discussed in connection with the motion to approve adoption.
Correct.
So you're not going to pull, discuss.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, right now, okay.
Okay, so, uh, board, uh, on this career source request on Eagles on the Williams I got with Ms. Amy prior to the meeting, and this is the remaining amount of money on the twenty one twenty two budget. But as we were in the budget hearings, as Mr. Richard explained to us, you know, there was deficiencies in this operation. And so I have no problem going ahead and letting this money that we already had budgeted, this be their last draw, correct, David? This final, this.
Close out the curtains.
And this is fifty six hundred and seventy dollars is what's left owed to them for their operation up until October. I will just.
Correct.
And, uh, but Joel directed me if I'm doing this incorrectly. But I would like to make a motion, if necessary, to not, although it's funded in the budget, not to disperse this money. Let's cut ties with Eagles on the ones due to the results that Mr. Powell shared with us.
You're talking about next fiscal year?
Yes, it's, it's in, it's in next fiscal year budget, but not to disperse the funds.
I need to, if I could, Commissioner Murphy, let me review the stats, their contract. I'm sure we can. Because I know we do have our agreement. So the way the agreements are drafted, the way the agreements are drafted is they renew if the board appropriates the money in the budget. So it's renewed, so I just need to see if I turn it. So let me tell you how to do it, okay? To give you some time to look at it.
Okay. Okay.
But just, just for the board, to remind the board, the way we structured all those continuing personal services type contracts, the five oh one C threes basically, if you appropriate the money in the budget, then it comes in a contract per year. So I just need to go, Commissioner, I'll take a look at the contracts.
Okay, I, I guess we should run that by the time, because I've learned totally about that. You know, when we budgeted, it extended. Uh, that's the first time I've ever heard that in six years.
I would not agree with that as well. Typically, if something we budgeted, you always have the option of.
And you still, still.
Okay.
Well, I say, so in order to avoid having to redraw those contracts every single year, which is what the staffs have to do. The idea was we just, if the board appropriated the money, then that contract would, it was a little too big.
They were not included.
They were not included, okay, well then she's helping me out.
Okay.
They're not one of them.
If the board voted to not extend the monies, you would have not extended.
Okay, so is this a proper time to make that vote? Or let Jones still review and bring it back next week?
I think let us, let, let.
Okay, they're good till after.
Yes, we have time to review.
You can't hear any of mine. Um, we're gonna, Ron, we're gonna strike, I guess we're gonna strike that from the consent agenda right now because we're fixing a vote on the consent agenda. So we're gonna put that off till next week, is that correct?
No, no, no.
No?
Just Murphy, Commissioner Murphy left it on the consent agenda to approve payment to the end of this fiscal.
Okay.
His concern is in the next fiscal year, you not extend any of them.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have a motion in second or we already have it, right?
We do.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
I'll make a motion also to the, uh,
Adopt, consent agenda?
Adopt.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Ford and a second by Mr. Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, we have two out of your consideration sitting. The first is out of Goodson Place, as we recall, we were concerned about the new requirements of how to continue the land to be improvised on, exploring the money from closures, exploring the money for others, expenses, et cetera. I came back from this board and said, if you found out a way to not increase the solid waste assessment, we should come up with a very creative way to control expenses and ensure the landfill keeps holding its own by the users of the landfill. So that's what resolution twenty twenty two R fifty one does for you. So if these be charged for use of the county landfill solid waste facility, hereby admitted as follows, plus one and sixty dollars per ton, pass free at forty one dollars per ton, pass free all unitary, hundred dollars for twenty yards, one fifty for thirty, two hundred at forty, brown goods at seventy dollars per ton, white goods, scrap metal, residents living outside settings at no charge with thin ceilings, twenty eight dollars per ton, businesses, twenty eight dollars per ton, asbestos, oil, coal, power, two dollars each, bowl, one sixty five per ton, recyclables at forty per ton, any other waste, five dollars a ton, bone homes, two hundred fifty dollars per side, septic waste at twenty five cent per gallon, reversion use only. The chairman asking for motion to adopt intensive use of the twenty twenty two R fifty one to increase, but we got a written solid waste.
Come on. Second, motion by Williams and a second by Mr. Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Final item I have is our contract moving, our battling shovel. So as we talked about in the last meeting with the RFP process, which allowed us to better to apply with these contractors, we did that. We had six successful contractors, but only three of the six went the entire category, north, south, and special mode. I support remembering that because when we look at the numbers, it's kind of a illusion because they didn't mean the full thing. But basically moving your current contractor, five sixty one, creative at six nineteen, potato seed broccoli at two point one five nine million, they captured all three categories. Honest, there's a big spread. Then you had crews come in at one point four to get more and fill pot that one point four up. So I ask you, Kirby, now, current contractor's boot, he was looking once again. He has agreed finish up, probably, probably at least one more cutting of this county. Brood, pick up the letter, do everything, amend it one more time. We're ending our motorcycle, and we all know what we've been through the last couple of years. Let's allow him to finish up this motorcycle. With the understanding, the creator, there's a big spread between them and this guy. Creators are long with us. We've got mowing contract, we've got battling mower, but we never put the roof probably into our life. Big deal with the big. A big spread between creator and person. We made it clear, creator, you're awarded this contract. We're gonna start the first month, unless we notice wherever that is, April one next year. You're gonna have a schedule, you're gonna have a map, you're not the idiot on that map. We're not gonna come in with slopes, basketball, not gonna come in with landfill. And if we get behind what I owe them, I'll be back in front of this board. This is my recommendation map. Do it to your next member. Your next member's crew, your next member's field pot. They've got a boat, they've got silver, silver boardings, they're not mine. They have agreed and allowed me to say this publicly, that if we need them to grass for us, I have to drive the fuel to blade shore. The numbers are the numbers. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared for any discussion about, I recommend allowing the current motorcycle to finish up by the food, food and brews. When the war be created for next year, and we understand it's gonna be a learning curve, we can't have that learning curve on our lot. There's a big spread. The war be created next year, finish up this year.
Do I have a motion?
A motion to award the bid to creative concepts.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Witt and a second by Mr. Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Kevin, it's hard for a quick question. Were the, were the alternate vendors?
By June of next year, they want to see a notice to proceed. We can't notice to proceed the whole project because we don't have, because we still have the funding. So Kevin talked about what we're doing there. It's mostly site work type of work. Putting in the roadway, putting in the water and sewer that gets to the plant, digging the pension ponds.
Yes, sir. What David says, he had to take it all to the L S U bar. Try to work on the grant procedures. But the thought process was like a down and forth by job, as you all know, we direct purchase all the way around. Well, you're always running a risk when you have a contract to come in behind when you pull the problem. Anything that could go wrong, obviously things are going to start falling as well. We store it by, we transport it by, we sure buy it. So we were trying to kick off with a nervous conversation that David indicated. That's that's what we required this issue at that funding place where it's fit. Well, we don't worry being out of town. There are certain things such as all that he just talked about, site work, roadwork, hog work, that has to be done anyway. We can complete in the issue with the most we have. So we kind of met all of our protect our boxes. We do not run the risk of parts of sewer plant, package plants, stuff like that. We just don't think we'd be much wiser to jump on things that we can finish, complete, and cannot change. Versus piece milling it again or run risk in our opinion that are not necessary.
So as Kevin said, we're talking with the management district Thursday, talking with the E O tomorrow. What we're asking the board is authorization to proceed with Phase One, which would be what's left of the floor of the jobs program. And expend that money by doing things onsite in Phase One. While we put together the financing plan that will cover the gap so you can at some point in the future get a go ahead action.
The chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
That recommendation to divide, uh, that project. And maybe to stop working on Phase One.
I'll say that. And, uh, like I say, I, I think this is, uh, great way to proceed.
We have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Ford. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, our requirement policy, in the past, the board has had a policy that said we require audits of all of our outside agencies. Community centers get one every five years. Amy keeps track of those things and she's been doing a good job of that. Some are behind, most are out, most are caught up. But in going through this year and this year's budget, Kurt Problems came to us and, as we've seen goes previously, Kurt Problems came to us and said, their auditor came and said, you know, you can do this without requiring a full audit. So we talked about the, there's three levels of audit. There's compiled reports, there's reviewed financial statements, and then there's a full audit. If you do like a reviewed financial statement, that's the auditor going over all their financials and making sure things are in order. But it's a lot shorter than a full audit. You do compile reports, that's an even lower level. For instance, we know that according to this pile of reviewed financial statements is about half the cost of the full audit. Full audit is six thousand, reviewed financial statements would be three thousand, I think. The accountant in your package from Kurt's problems said full audit would be between five and six and compiled reports would be there. The financial statements would be about three something. Combined reports would be even less than that. We would not recommend compiled reports. I think you might be at least review financial statements. And all not-for-profits have to file, have to file a nine ninety N to the IRS. Or they're not proving to the IRS they're still a not-for-profit. So one of the things we can do to guarantee our not-for-profits are doing what they're supposed to is every year require them to give us a copy of the nine ninety N that they submit to the IRS to verify that they're still a not-for-profit. So the question is, does the board want to remain with a full audit requirement every five years? Or do we want to annually do the Form nine ninety and maybe do the reviewed financial statements? What level is this board comfortable with? I know somebody from Kurt Problems who's going to be here tonight. Are they here? I forget Ryan didn't show up.
Oh.
So it's really up to the board and we'll follow whatever direction the board would like to go.
Whether it's Dick, uh, uh, his company will, will, uh, a short person to accomplish the same goal and save over nine hundred dollars, let you three thousand dollars. And I think that's what it should go.
This is a recommendation of Dick you're saying today?
Yeah, Amy and I spoke with Dick Problem and we talked about it. His concern is a lot of not-for-profits are so small. They don't really have a lot of records and so it's much more difficult to do a full audit and there's certain requirements to meet a full audit. But they can produce reviewed financial statements and we can review the financial statements. And again, that works only if we also require them to give us a copy of the Form nine ninety every year.
I'll put that on the motion.
Yeah, some of these, uh, not-for-profits, I mean, but we only give fifty twenty thousand dollars if you require them to pay about six thousand dollars in audit. That is kind of creepy, of course. Uh, but, uh, I, I could agree the Commissioner Williams to three thousand dollars, you know, making part of the, uh, Form nine ninety. I, I think that would probably be, uh, to, so I'll say that.
A motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Ford. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Yes, sir.
Uh, Dick, last year, I was voting for all these not-for-profits, all these organizations that have not met the board that set forth. And I see you buddy, you just your bud, get your bud, you do that use.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet over there by Devin. Do you see it, Devin? Pass it out. Let Amy, um, help me compile. Yeah, that spreadsheet. Should be a stack of them.
Fifteen of them.
Well, they sure. Oh, okay. This shows you where we're at today. Uh, some of the ones that did not file, we did not refund to. Do we come see where we stand today? So yeah, these are ones that they were budgeted, but funded whenever has happened or given. So based on what Commissioner Williams said, we would not give money to these same organizations next year until they come into compliance. Now, some of them like Girl Softball and Poor White, I'm not sure even exist then.
They, they exist, but we haven't had enough kids to show up. About two years, but we uh, I hope we can get that program sorted, but I don't know. We're having trouble with football also. This year we don't have enough kids to make one team ten and under. I, I mean, we're losing a lot of kids to Brankford and other areas. Uh, because I think we need to step up our, our program. How we do that. And that's what we need to talk about, but, uh, maybe something in the future.
Well, uh, Mr. Ford, you know, another time not-for-white until they moved out from, uh, under, uh, Columbus Youth Football, I guess. When they moved out on the, on the Columbus Youth Football, that program went down and continues to go down. So it's something you might need to work with down there. You're going to say, look at guys, if we don't have a set, set of program, let's get back under the car, counting on the road when it comes to, uh, youth football and, and baseball, girl softball.
How does baseball do, doing down there, Ross?
Baseball, it didn't turn out good. And I mean, baseball, T-ball and all that.
Maybe what we're having problems with is the girl softball and the, uh, football. Trying to get kids to sign up for it.
And the last meeting, the last item is probably the most important. We'd like to be able to let the down the poor white use our South Florida utilities for truckers. There's seeking board approval for it.
Second. A motion by Mr. Williams, a second by Mr. Witt. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
David, before you, on your way back, it's not a question. First meeting after the budget?
Yes.
Acceptance of the budget. Could you and Jennifer give us an update on all the, uh, incentives and what have you that we got out there and where we're at with them?
I'll have those for you on October sixth.
Good deal. Thank you.
All right. Next thing is Mr. Witt about his water problem.
So commissioners, a couple of meetings ago, uh, we had residents that were served by the former Lance Water System. This is the property that's tied up in the, uh, in the Hill versus Swan River Water Management lawsuit. This was put under, uh, receiver by a judge to, it's a small ridge. They continue to have problems. There's another outage, uh, last week and trouble getting ahold of people again. This topic was actually brought up in the utility committee. And the consensus of the utility committee was it would be a good idea to move this under the auspices of the county since the county does have utility staff now. This would require, uh, if, if I understood Mr. Foreman correctly, sending a, a proposal to the judge to, uh, change the judgment from Small Ridge to us. It may require us making Small Ridge hold on some expenses he's got. But these complaints have been there since he took over. I've heard them. And they're not going away. And, you know, I think he's proven that while they may do a good job for us in other utilities, he's not doing it here. You're not going to solve this problem between those residents and this contractor. And if you don't do something about it, Mr. Phillips is going to inherit it, you know, in a couple of months. And it's just going to keep going and going. So my recommendation is, you know, let's let Joel proceed to petition the judge to put this under the county. Let the county take this over and, and do what we have to do to get Mr. Small Ridge out of this particular utility.
Yeah, both.
That's my motion.
Motion, Mr. Witt, seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Do we have any?
Before we move on.
Okay, what, we got, we got to do open public comments. Is there any open public comments to the board? Okay, how about staff comments? Oh, oh, come on down. I didn't see you. I'm sorry, ma'am. You be next.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Yoldor, and I live in the eight Ashford, uh, subdivision, which is really just one small cul-de-sac that this well services that we're talking about. That we have so much trouble with Mr. Small, but he's a very rude man. He's not informative, not even to his staff. His staff's afraid to call him. And I just wanted to say that last week on the seventeenth, we were without water from approximately eleven p.m. at night until the next afternoon, meaning about fifteen to seventeen hours. Now, how would you feel if you gotta go to work or go to class? And you had no water. You couldn't wash your face, take your medications, brush your teeth, take a shower, nothing. And we were not informed. I called the five and left the message. No response. And finally, um, Lance Water, we get a little message or text message Tuesday at nine thirty four in the morning. Okay, this has been going on since eleven at night. That, uh, the water outages, uh, in our area, water services will need to restore as soon as possible. Okay, now, as of today, September fifteenth, the Lance Water customers received a boil water notice. That was five days ago. We've never been told or given a notice that I have received on my phone that we can stop boiling water or using bottled water. So he's really not interested in this particular system. And knowing, uh, um, water, wastewater engineer, there are three problems there. They said it was struck, the pump was struck by lightning. Well, there was no lightning that night. So where did this lightning thing come from? Okay, so, um, they did whatever they did and took fifteen to seventeen hours. What the hell am I going to say about that? I almost forgot to ask, oh, excuse me.
Ma'am, it might have been the alarm. I, I think the alarm went off for the two minutes. And, and I tried to stop everybody about two minutes and twenty seconds. Yeah, yeah, but this has been solved. We, we're not, we're fixing to fix it where we're running that show out there and you're not going to have these problems anymore. I, I know you're, I know you're upset about it and we are too, just as much, just as much. So we have just voted to solve it. And so.
Well, I want you to know it's been going on. I did a survey, a whole neighborhood in two thousand fifteen, and nothing's happened since then. And number half the people in the neighborhood participated in that study and who Toby got the information.
Okay, we appreciate it and we're going to take care of it. I can't let you go any further, but let Toby answer your question.
The issue, the issue with the whole thing is it's tied up, it's, it's, it was, it's never a county act. Never county's responsibility that a lawsuit happened and, and the court said county, you know, uh, this is an abandoned utility. You've got to do something with it. You've got to take it. At the time it happened, the county had no in-house utilities to take it over. So the judge appointed, the judge gave to this contractor. So the county's kind of an outside third party here trying to do everything we can to help you. And, 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 you know, we've finally figured out, we found, we now have our utility infrastructure in place. So we, we had the means to take over the utility and we, we brought to the utility committee and that's what the action we took tonight. So.
So what, what, hold on. I can't let you speak anymore. We're done. Two minutes, thirty seconds, we're done. I'm not being mean. But we have, we have taken care of this issue. It's done. We fixing to fix it. We, there's not going to be any more questions as to whether that man. I understand. I understand. Okay. I don't mean to stop you quick, but I promise you that we, we have been working on this and Mr. Witt's been working on it and it is a done deal. We're going to get that judge to point us. And hopefully he does. Do we have any staff comments? Oh, we got one more open public comment.
That's a must.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not a fun thing to not have water and those people have been waiting too long, really. Do we have any staff comments? Updates from the county manager? Commissioner comments?
No, I don't.
I, I've got one thing I want to bring up. The Richardson Community Center, we've been dealing with this for three months now. Well, last Friday, we had a very, very rude meeting. Uh, that's the best way I can put it, rude meeting. Where our county manager was cussed at, slandered, called names. And I, I, I don't know what we've got to do to stop this behavior. But this behavior has got to be stopped. We can't allow our employees and our staff to be basically verbally assaulted, verbally abused, uh, verbally bullied, any way you want to put it. And, uh, and not only that, we've been dealing with this community center for about three months now. And, uh, don't know if we're getting anywhere with it or not, but it has consumed all of our county managers' time, all of our assistant county managers' time. And, uh, and we don't even own this community center. The city owns this community center. Don't even know if we ever will get a clear title of this community center. We've been trying to get this property cleared up for five, five years now, I know, and still don't have a clear title of this. So I commend Commissioner Williams, what he's done with this community center over the years. But at this point, I am willing to make a motion right now to pull the plug on this business. Get it back to the city, quit spending money out there, and be done with it.
I, I wouldn't go down Fort White and pull something with the city. Wait, 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 I, I didn't say a word. You don't let one bad apple fall, uh, fall on your shoulder. They have worked out. We have worked diligently to separate Richardson Recreation Department away from Richardson Community Center. That's done. All we got to wait is to put the pieces together now. And they have the money and the budget to do that, man. And we are not going to let anybody dictate to us how it should be done. We're going to do it the way I think, along with staff, says it needs to be done in the community. Just give us time to work it out. The only reason we don't have the, the, uh, uh, the city have voted to give us the community center, give us that property, but they have applied for a grant using the, uh, Richardson properties as a way to get the grant. They were awarded the grant, make a lot of improvement within the neighborhood. And once that was done, then they were on the agreement to give us that property. David, did I say anything that's not right?
No, yeah, um, we would be further along on the city C D V grant, except they have not issued the contracts yet. That grant is still awaiting contract.
Who's that? Well, you said they have not.
D E O. Department of Economic Opportunity, average quarter was still here, has not issued any contracts on that particular grant yet. They've rewarded the grant, they've sent out grant award letters to the city, but they've not put out the contract. We, in the meantime, Mike has gone out and done the R F Ps and ready to issue the R F Ps for, um, grant management and engineering on the project. But again, we're waiting on D E O. That's one of the things we're going to talk about tomorrow when we're in town.
On that ticker grant.
Right.
But that's a city grant, right?
It is a city grant. Uh, the city authorized us to administer it for the city.
Well, you know, I, I know what Mr. Ron Williams has done over the years at the community center slash, uh, recreation department. But I, I'm done with this mess because I can't tell you how many phone calls I've had every week. And, uh, you know, the, it, 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 that's, this is crazy. This is absolutely asinine, what happened up here this past Friday, what I was, you know, explained to.
I guess I need to know, since we've got a motion on the floor, what, what happened? Ms. Kirby, would you like to come up and speak to that? Would you like to come up and speak to what happened?
I can speak to it.
Or, or Mr. Kraus can do it.
Well, just, and to clear up Mr. Witt's. Who, who, who was the meeting with? Who, who, who's actually representing who and who said what, what? Who was doing the harassment? Was it actually Richardson Community Center staff? Hang on, just one second. So the board, you don't have a motion. No, Mr. Ford didn't make, didn't make.
I did make a motion.
I know you did, but you can't make a motion if something's wrong.
No, sir. We make motions all the time when stuff's not on the agenda. That's my fact. And I disagree with that over it.
It is.
We make motions all the time when stuff's not on the agenda. And we pass motions all the time. The stuff's not on the agenda. And I did just make a motion. And I stand by that motion.
All right. It's order violation. Go ahead.
In a nutshell, again, not trying to stir up anything. I had a meeting in the morning with Mr. Warren. The meeting in the morning did turn heated. Uh, that afternoon, he, um, came by my office at three o'clock in the afternoon. He posted something on Facebook in the interim, saying that he was going to bring personal security. When he came to my office at three o'clock in the afternoon, he brought two armed security guards.
Man.
Well, I mean, we met with him. We had two sheriff's deputies. Um, he did ask some things that were inappropriate.
Go ahead, Ms. Kirby.
I'll add to this meeting also. There was a series of questions asked, reasonable questions. At some point during the conversation, at what? About five minutes into it, I would say?
Right.
We had a question for copies of the budgets, which we've given immediately, copies for salaries, which we've given. Took red items. At some point it got quiet. I think I asked a question, or agreed on a question, or made a call. Warren said he was, thank you. That's reasonable. Then I'm not deliberately to say publicly what I said next. But let's just say there's body shaming going on, or whatever. I've never been talked for a day of my life, me, or anybody, to talk to me. For no reason. I can only speak if, Kirby, I will never subject myself to any government like that.
I, I guess my question is, is Mr. Warren officially representing the Richardson Community Center board?
No.
When he shows up to, to do this?
No, he's not. My knowledge, he is not on the Richardson Community Center.
So why wouldn't he put in handcuffs and take out of the county office? I mean, this is my question.
The sheriff's deputies at the meeting were unsure of based on changes in state law, what is allowed and not allowed.
Well, what not, what, what should not be allowed is anybody to come into a public office and use the words that Kevin expressed to me earlier today in the last Friday night. I thought I was going to have to go hunt Kevin down and, and, and hogtie him for a little bit. And, uh, and some of the expressions that I heard go towards you. Uh, 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 this is crazy. And, and, you know, and this, there, there's no fix here. Uh, I don't see the fix.
And I will say, armed guards, openly armed guards coming into the office would be very upsetting.
Yeah, that, that's what I was about to say. I had a, I had a secretary calling me and, and she was pretty much crying and she couldn't believe, you know, this is the same thing that I, I can imagine in my mind, in my mind, that, that Mr. Coffett was subjected to, if I had to bet. Uh, so, you know, it, it's a pattern. It's, it's a bad pattern. It's not good. And we just need to be careful. You know, we need to be careful in our offices. And it's, it's a sad day when you have to be careful going in the office.
Mr. Chair, when this behavior was exhibited to Mr. Coffett, we took definitive action. And we filed a trespass warrant and we banned him from the building. It seems to me that if that elevated that response, then this incident right here surely elevates that response. So, you know, I'm, I don't know why we don't go down that road. It's, it's one individual, uh, it that we keep having problems with. So I received a call shortly after the meeting included. As you know, there were a bunch of layered other questions. Um, and, and I think where staff is too nice for their own good sometimes, if that makes sense. I've told staff multiple times, nobody's First Amendment rights forces you to allow yourself to be treated with less than you. Just because, I mean, it's a First Amendment right, say something doesn't mean you have to sit there and attack. The, the county manager is not obligated to get people meetings. If he has a safety concern, which he clearly did since he had deputies there. The, the legal approach is don't take the meeting. Don't invite that individual in to create that sphere of risk for you and your staff. We have a secure door. Somebody shows up with two armed guards, they have an opportunity to leave. That's all they have an opportunity to do. They don't want to come in. You haven't found out about this after the fact. You do have a problem in Florida statute. You guys know the firearms pre-entry statute. The only thing you're allowed to regulate is whether or not your employees can bring their firearms. Uh, and then the only exclusion is public meetings, public meetings of the governing board. No firearms, not even concealed carry, to be in here. Okay, understandable. But we're not allowed to regulate anything against. So it's really up to the staff based on their own personal sense of safety. Somebody shows up and they brandish a weapon, you know, that, you don't have that secure door because that is a security area. And you don't allow the meeting. So that was probably the first area where if you flipped it around and we talked before rather than after, that might change. The other thing is, and I've told staff and now I've told the county manager, the first time somebody addresses you in a way that's unprofessional or inappropriate, you then be, you ask them to leave. And if they don't, Commissioner Witt's exactly right. Now they're trespassed. And we have that, that patent long. Now that you've adopted this ordinance, it's a legal issue. But we absolutely, it's, it's about individual, because we can't pass a statute, we can't pass an ordinance for Canada policy. That says no firearms and no weapons in our buildings, because the state told us to keep it. If we do, it's misdemeanor.
So, because of confrontation in the morning with Mr. Warren. I asked the sheriff to send, you know, bail the guy. Just in case he became unruly. We were not expecting him to bring armed security guards.
But again, in retrospect. I think, I think the county manager agrees, in, in retrospect, he won't have that meeting. If he has any reason to fear for his safety or whether or not somebody's gonna wish to, don't take the meeting. He's not under any obligation to subject himself to that or to expose himself to, to his associate or somebody in violence. So, if, if he's concerned enough that he feels the need to call a deputy, that's his first, it's the first suggestion to him to not take that. And if somebody shows up and they exhibit violent tendencies or they show force or demonstrate force, you don't let them behind that secure door. There's no law that says we have to. No law says we have to. But I think it's gonna require a level of vigilance, and again, our staff. Are extremely accommodating, extremely open. They encourage people to come in and take tours of the office, I think that's what happens.
He showed up at about nine fifteen, asked for a tour of the meeting, for a tour of the office, and Miss, Mrs. Lisa gave him the tour, no issues. Wanted to see me afterwards. Um, put stipulations on it, which I did not agree to. He offered to have to come into the office and talk, as I do all citizens. He started making demands, and it is.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Kirby.
Chair, I don't have a lot of reach. I wish, I will never get subjected to that.
No, I, I, I just think that, y- y- if you're subjected that the one time, you should never be subjected to it again. So, y'all do what you gotta do and do what you wanna do. But I think I've stated in the past that, that you shouldn't have done it in the first place. But, but we're trying to be good to people and give them their rights, because we're, we're told we don't ever do that, well, we do. We, we, we open our door to anybody. And, and I'm glad y'all did it, because now, you know, it's, it's not something you can, you can do anymore. Because it's just, I mean, he, he can, uh, talk to y'all in a whole lot of different ways, on the phone or in, you know, email, many other ways. But, but, um, we always try to meet with, with the constituents to make sure that we solve their problems, and sometimes there are just some you can't meet with.
You, you've got, you've got two documented episodes of this individual right now, I don't think this individual's mentally stable. I, I would not, I would not take any, I, I would not entertain any more interaction with him, actually, is the way to go.
I mean, I've seen no other option, I mean, Joe, you're the attorney, is, is this valid trespass? Is there any county?
If, if the county, well, so, I don't know that Mr. Kraus asked him to leave, and he said no. That would be one situation, trespass. Would you leave? And you say no, tag trespass on the spot. If Commissioner, or excuse me, if Manager Kraus wants to send a trespass notice, he certainly can.
That's up to you, that's up to you, David, just like it was up to, just like it was up to Mario to make his complaint, if you feel like making a complaint.
And I, I'd back you a hundred percent, and, you know, and, and, and not to cut you off.
I know, boy.
The. You know, I, I'm just done with this thing. You know, uh, there, there's, there's been a lot of great things to try, you know, we had the group up here last week on the pickleball deal. You know, I, I have no idea how this operation is gonna take place. But what I do know is that. Where you're gonna be in the recreation business, we're gonna be out of it. Until I know what the plan is, I, I have no other option but to, uh, second, uh, rock and roll, uh, most. And, and I, I'm confident with that. And put the, put the brakes on this thing, it's gonna get people to the table, and if we, if we're gonna figure it out, we're gonna figure it out, but.
If I could, Commissioner Murphy, because Mr. Kraus and I both went to a, would be, the Richardson Community Center. And we told him exactly what you're saying. You know, the county's operations here are gonna be limited to county-sponsored reg functions. Everything else is county-led, right? We, we did, and I think Commissioner Witz was there for that meeting. So, that message was communicated to that board. What Mr. Warren's level of involvement is, I don't understand, because he was not there at that meeting. And if he was told anything, he was told by somebody. So. I, I think. That's where they believe they are with respect to the counties, that they are on their own, with respect to running that community center. Whether or not there's something else going on here that I'm not aware of, that's entirely possible, based on what happened with these guys in front.
I mean, the only.
But in terms of messaging, it's been very clear from the people's side.
That, David, the only conversation I've had with you relevant to this, after you, I think this meeting that you, Joe, just spoke of. Uh, there's been so many meetings, I'm kinda, but my point is, to what extent? Is the community center willing to do, or is, or is there such a, is there such a, an agreement?
So, the community center is supposed to get with, um, Mr. Foreman and talk about revising their, um, charter and the bylaws. Uh, but our agreement was, and it's not in writing yet, something we're working on. Is that we would do county functions. We reserve the building, county functions, and we would only handle county functions. We would not get involved in any of their activities. So, whether they're renting the center out for wrestling, or a wedding, or a funeral, or, or a family reunion, we would take no part in it. So, those events that had been happening where our staff. Was serving as their staff is no longer going to happen. There was too much confusion, too much intermingling, and we gotta keep it centered. We're not gonna touch their money, we're not, you know, they gotta do their thing, we gotta do our, our thing. The only thing is, we share our building.
I think, I think you can't leave out the recreation component, because you probably have a hundred, uh, pickleball players that. I mean, probably the majority of them reside in the district close to the city, but I'm sure some of them reside in my district. That show up, but every time this thing comes up, they, you know, part of our agreement with Richardson is, they have a place to play, you know, that's part of it.
I think that's handled by the board.
Absolutely right, Commissioner. Um, pickleball is a recreation activity. As such, it will be a county recreation activity.
Exactly, so if you say.
He will still. Be over pickleball or working with pickleball people, or working with armed people.
But to the extent of the motion on the table, if you withdraw funding, do you leave those people without a place to, to go?
Yeah, would they be without a place?
They gave the facility back to the city, I have no idea.
I bet they would be up to the city. The city, it's, it's, it's city owns it, let them provide the funding to keep it open and let people play it. And, and let the city be over who wants to run it. You know, 'cause right now, uh. Uh, Mayor Warren runs it, you know, and he, and I think he runs the city also. So, uh, you know, I think we give the city back their community center and their, and their, and the Richardson, the Richardson community center, and let them do what they want to with it.
But Commissioner Ford, to your point, when you're saying that Mr. Warren has undue influence at the facility and the city, if you give it back to the city, you for sure. Will have our, our users of that recreation center without a place to go. Because if, 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 if Mr. Warren had his way, they wouldn't be there.
Well, I think we take that money and we put it towards our facilities that we own, and they, we've got tennis courts. If we can put them in, they can play pickleball on the tennis courts or whatever. And, and, and here's the thing, you're talking about the pickleball, it's the only thing you're talking about. Right now, we have a million dollars a year funded for Richardson Community Center. For pickleball, is that what you wanna do, spend a million dollars a year for pickleball?
It's more, it's more than pickleball. Just in the recreation, the recreation, uh, opponent of, of, of Richardson. Recreation, there are roughly ten thousand people go through there a year. Ten thousand. For recreation, just recreation alone. That does not have anything to do with, 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 uh, the community center activities that they have. We only talk about recreation, that's the only thing we talk about, recreation, ten thousand people go through that facility a year. If people deserve wholesome recreation, just in, in, in the inner city. And all our guests would come in, just like anywhere else in this county. There have been the component, that, 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 the county attorney, along with, with the Anamatic Reparation, I mean, uh, uh, Richardson, Anam, Richardson. Board have worked out to separate reparations of the county away from the, the repar, I keep saying Anamatic, but one time, they were part of Anamatic also. To separate Richardson Board from the Recreation Department. They don't have anything to do with recreation, they don't have anything to program for the county. You wasn't here, uh, Mr. Ford, when the county took it over. We were spending big millions of dollars this outside over there, for those folks to have decent reparations. The city wasn't doing anything whatsoever for Richardson. Not a thing, it just was dormant, rotting away over there. And the board at that time said, we deserve wholesome recreation in the inner city, just like we do everywhere else in this county. So, and I think if we close it, there'll be discrimination against this board. You take a prominent historic site in Columbia County, the only site that's left. Everything is towed out except for a couple of buildings and, and a gymnasium. Now, we got a board sitting here, wanna take that away from the black community?
We're not taking.
No, 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 we are taking it away, 'cause if you give it to the city, it just gonna go away.
The city owns it now.
It, it's gonna go away, the city have voted to give up that building.
Lady, you're gonna have to give to us.
I don't know where, and you need, let, 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 let me finish, Mr., let me finish. I never cut you off when you talk, I never cut a commission off when they talk. So, please give me the same respect that I give you. That's alright. The same respect that I give you. I told you why they had not given to, for all the million dollar grants, and the million dollar grants they got to do. Work around the black community in there to fix the roads, the sidewalks, and fix, do things that's on. It had to be in their name as ownership in order to get the grant. Joel, you had talked with the city, David, you had talked with the city, once that is done, they would transfer that, they would hold that, let it give, that building to the, back to the county. Am I right or wrong, Joel?
There's an interlocal agreement.
We have an interlocal agreement that says that. Did this board pass?
Ron. Are, are you done, Mr. Williams?
Yes, I'm through.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Williams, there's no more public comments, sir. Um, I. I wanna commend you on how you did your job out there. And it seems that, for some reason. A man that's been out a year and a half decided you don't doing your job right. And to me, that, that ain't right. You've been out there for longer than probably, well, as long as I've been, first time I played basketball, I was about thirteen years old, and I think you were fourteen years old when you were out there. And I just feel like. We've got a person that jumped in there in the last year and a half that's really just mucked up the water, just, just mucked up everything, and, 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 uh. You, you can't see the truth through the words, and, and, and I know that Ron Williams. Has those folks' best interest, because he's been the one there, along with Mario Coffey, and all the others for years and years and years. When these other people weren't anywhere around, anywhere close. So, I, I've got, I can tell y'all right now, I got pickleball people freaking out right now. So, and they asked me on the last meeting, are y'all? I don't know where this came up, but they said, w- we, we need our pickleball place, we know, and, and they said, we're gonna. That, somebody said they were gonna close it, I don't know where that came from, I think that was just the new transition that Mr. Williams is, what we're trying to do right now. And, and I got a lot of people in my district that play this pickleball. And, and I don't know how we can replace that area out there, I don't know. And, and I'm gonna tell you the truth. I, Mr. Williams, I. We spend so much time on this out here, and I can see why Mr. Ford, and, and I'm gonna tell you the truth, at first. I was probably close to being with him, I, I was. And I, and I, and I understand why he's frustrated. And I understand why all the other folks up here are frustrated, because all we do is do. And all we get is how we ain't done nothing. And, and after a while, if your bricklayer's laying brick at your chimney, and you keep slapping the bricks out of his hand and cussing him, sooner or later, that bricklayer's gonna go home. And that's what I think is, uh, trying to happen here, and, 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 and I'm. I, I'm, I'm in between, and I'm all around, and, and I'm, I'm just saying. We do a good job at that place out there, and you've done a good job, Mr. Williams. But it's gonna change now, it's, it's a new day, we have to change and do it a different way, because of people in the, some people in the community that wanted a certain way. And, um, I, I, I believe if, if y'all don't mind, I'll table this to the next meeting. Because I'd like to talk to the pickleball people, and I'd like to talk to some other people. Because. It just seems like there's never any positive, and it's always negative. Talked about the commission and everybody, you, you, Mr. Williams, you've been talked about wrong on, on, on social media too. And I don't believe you should be talked about, because you're the one that started this, and has done the job that's been done all these, you, you and Mario Coffey. So.
I would say that if, if, if I backed up. From what I've been called and talked about while I've been on this board, I wouldn't be here.
That's true.
I wouldn't be here. But. This board shouldn't let one, one or two people stop what's going on out there. If you wanna do anything, act, get record, Anamatic, I mean, I keep saying Anamatic, but once Anamatic was part of, of the board. Richardson and Anamatic know it, with what that board was over. Now they are not over anything at Anamatic. Let them come to the meeting and tell them their version, their views.
I think, I think we need to hear from them, I think, I think it'd be good for the candidates, for them.
I'd, I'd love to hear from some people. I think that Mr. Ford's point, point earlier, the amount of money that you guys spent out there already. You know, and you spent it for not just the Richardson area, but you spent it for the pickleball people. And I know we're, we're gonna be in the future transitioning to a new facility, and, and Mr. Phillips is gonna have to sit up here and be a big part of that, and, and, and I hope that goes smooth, and you'll, you'll reevaluate in the future. How much money you spent at Richardson, because you're diverting to make the future happen, but, but. You know, the, the, the fact we spent, and we've already invested alone, is enough not to just give it back to the city.
I know, I know. A million dollars, we are investing a million dollars.
And I'm gonna tell you what.
Money we spent it out there.
And I'm gonna tell you what, I'd like to, I'm gonna table this till the next meeting, but. I wanna thank Mr. Ford. For bringing this up, and bringing it to, uh, this discussion, 'cause this discussion needed to be done months ago. And, and, and I can tell you. What he's saying ain't far off, a- and, and, and it's not far off, if, if it keeps going like it is. And, and I, I, I'm all for the youth having something to do, we all are, but, but. There, there's a limit to what you can take, you know, and what you can do and what, what can happen. And I understand, I, I understand, let, let's table it till next week, and I would like to hear for some people. That have positive things to say about the way the county's running, and if they don't, and we're running it wrong, then I guess that's, Mr. Ford's. Uh, motion makes sense, because I don't know how somebody can come in there and change the whole narrative to how terrible Richardson Gym is. When it's been a wonderful place for thirty-five years. I don't know how that happened, but I sure would like to hear somebody come here and tell me about it. I'd like them to tell me how wonderful it is. But I appreciate.
I would like to invite the Recreation Board. To the next meeting, and let them give you their point of view.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to, uh, if it pleases the board, assemble all the operative contracts, including the agreement. Under which we operate Richardson right now, uh, we're about seventeen years old, uh, the corporate documents for the. Richardson Board, uh, excuse me, for the Community Center Board, as well as the interlocal agreement with the city. 'Cause I'd like to give you all the rundown on it, explain, if you wanna avoid it, how you can do it. Like, we still, there are contracts that we have to avoid them, sir.
We need to have options, because.
So, you're gonna bring the, uh, Anamatic one also? Yes, all the agreements.
We need all of them, and, and, and we'll see how much support both of these places have, Ron says they're gonna come and give us support, and, and I. I'm just ready to either do what we're gonna do, or do the other, because it's, it's, it's just, you know. It's, it's a good place, and, and I'd hate to see Ron Williams' legacy, you know, go away like that. And, but it's already under attack, and, and it's not right, and it ain't proper, and it's people in the community doing it, and I don't know how they can do what they're doing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that, um, on October sixth, you set a workshop at nine fifty in the morning. On this issue, and then follow it up with regular meeting, make any decisions during that regular meeting.
Regular meeting is at five thirty?
Uh, it's at nine thirty.
Nine thirty, oh, you wanna set it. 9:30. Oh, you want to set a workshop.
Basically, you can have a workshop on this topic, and then go into the regular meeting and make whatever decisions this board chooses.
That sounds good. Is that okay with you, Mr. Ford?
I like that idea, but I will say this. I want a resolution to this matter.
This will be the last one we have, that's right.
And I'm going to tell you, we've got a lot of stuff going on in this county right now that our county manager don't need to spend every day trying to figure out what we're going to do with Richardson Community Center. Because I can tell you, that's all I've heard for the last three months, meeting after meeting at Richardson Community Center. And I, I want a resolution to this matter, and if we can settle it that day, that's fine.
I agree.
Mr. Ford, it's something that can happen between now and then, that's, I think, a big part of, that is, that is the entire problem. Is if this individual is, is not a representation of the Richardson Board, then it would, it would be, it would go a long way if the Richardson Board would say that. So when this individual calls the county professor to come take a meeting to speak on Richardson's behalf, he's nothing to do with them, and we know it. And not that after his behavior, you would take a meeting from him again. But if they would divorce themselves from him, I think 75 to 80% of this goes away, if they would publicly do that.
Yeah. So David, are you going to be prepared next meeting with your recommendation of organization of this operation?
Yes. And I, I'm just like Rocky.
Because I think this board.
After 9:30 on October 6th, and after we do this, and we all get it done, and everybody's amenable, I don't want to talk about it. I want it to be set in stone, and we roll with it, or we don't. Because this is just going on so much, and we don't, we just need to get a good policy, and I'm sure Ron will help with that, and let's, let's find a good policy.
There's a policy already in place. If, if David and, and Joel and the board have worked out already, they already made a policy on how to run.
Okay, well, we want to hear it.
It's not written yet.
We, yeah, when you get it written, you'll have it written by October 6th, right?
Yes, I'm going on.
So I'll table this until October 6th, but I'm just like Rocky. That afternoon, Richardson Gym will be rolling or whatever, whatever they're doing. They're going to be handling business, and we're going to have a good situation.
We'll be able to do whatever we have that meeting. I would like to see a letter from the city also, saying that they still aren't, and they can't keep their commitment to give us Richardson.
That's a good.
Because everything I hear, that they're not going to give us Richardson Community Center.
Okay. All right. There's another thing I want to point out. Our individual that upset Kirby and all the secretaries up there, I've seen on social media, I've heard on social media, that he has said he will push the city government to not give us Richardson. So if he pushes the city government to not give us Richardson, we're not getting Richardson.
Absolutely.
That's just a fact of life, boys. So when we have that meeting, we better meet with somebody. But, but you get, your problem is, you got two people that aren't going to be seated yet. So you really don't have, you know, you don't have a quorum there. But, but I want an assurance that if we do what we say we're going to do, that they're not going to do exactly what Mayor Warren tells them to do. And that is, on his page, I heard he said, I don't have to hear it, I can go look at it. But, but I want an assurance, you would want that too, wouldn't you, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, yeah. What Joel just needed to do, Joel, or, or David, to get on the agenda. We have an interlocal agreement now, saying that, do you all stand by the interlocal agreement? Let's say yes or no. You jump out there.
I, I would take, I would not. You already have them voting affirmatively on that interlocal agreement that says in no uncertain terms, the minute that grant is over, they gift the property to them. Now, so you're in the caper and see on that. That's a quick loss.
So if they said no, we sue them?
We sue them, you get it. So that's done. The issue though, again, this is why the workshop's a good idea, put everything on the table. If y'all decide you don't want to have Richardson, you can still do that too.
At that workshop, I would also want an estimate from you on what it's going to take to clear this title up with this property. Because that's going to be left on us too at that point.
Well, the, the title for the city property is not a one. Where you have a problem is you have a couple of out parcels that are actually in the outfield that don't belong to the city, and they don't belong to.
Property people on it.
That's where, and you're right, Commissioner Ford, that's what's at the point.
And Mr. Ford, he and I, I was going on too. I understand, but baseball, baseball field and the hog pen is a problem, Richardson too. They said it's our problem. We, when I was, when I was.
They didn't have no school.
We were taking action on those two properties, having their ownership, but ultimately, they didn't end up with the county owning two properties in the middle of the city.
I, I did not pursue those properties exactly because of this potential eventuality, right? Like, what if we changed our mind about this? I didn't want us to own two little pieces of property in the outfield, and then the city say, oh, we're going to keep the rest. So Commissioner Ford is exactly right. That's the issue that's out there. Probably a few thousand bucks to go, you know, if we have this imminent amendment. Probably, we'd have to negotiate with landowners first to straighten it out, to get where there's no.
More money.
I guarantee you, it won't take as much to clear it up, if we don't have to pay for that piece of property if we resign. I guarantee you that. It won't cost that much. Talk about how much it's going to cost, how much that going to end up costing?
But, but I'm, I, I want to appreciate y'all for bringing this up because it's, it really needs to come to a end pretty quick. All right, we missed a public comment. This young lady, can I have her come down? Come on, yeah, but she was here, and she had to leave, walk out, and we, we missed her. Come on down. You have two minutes, and about two minutes, you'll hear an alarm go off. After two minutes, I'll give you about 20 seconds to finish up, okay?
Can I give you guys, I made something.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
This is for you guys to keep. I took the liberty of creating an outline, and I don't know how you're going to know, but I need a legal draft. These are my ideas to, for some amendments to Article 3 in the county codes regarding animal welfare.
What is Article 3?
Regarding animal welfare, human treatment of animals.
Ma'am, go over to the podium and announce your name. There's people on the, watching on YouTube.
Can you speak in the mic? Yes, ma'am.
Can you, can you answer me now? My name is River Dana.
Do what, ma'am?
What am I supposed to say? I forgot what you said.
Just say your name and your address if you want to.
Okay, my name is River. I live here in Columbia County. And what I would like to say today for the board is, I know you guys have a lot of, a lot of other stuff that went on, but I noticed when I was looking in the county codes, there's a lot of commitments for like, a lot of animal welfare and human treatment of animals. And in your packet, I included some articles from other county codes, Latchla, Dubal, Leon County, but with some of like, what they have to say regarding human treatment of animals and stuff. Just for some ideas, and Professor Foreman, I, I tried to do as much work as possible for you guys to make as easy as possible. So I, I don't know if it's allowed, but I created a, like a legal draft of like, what it might look like if we changed the amendment here in Columbia County. I also made an outline for you guys to read. It's a lot of words I know. But just, you guys can keep it and look at it, or like, like the reasons behind why I'm asking to change some of the laws, specifically in this case tethering, and like, just outlining human care. Because if there's no rules to do it, what is human care? Then how can violators be assessed any kind of violation or punishment for it? That's basically the premise of where I'm going with this, is if you just, I'll maybe add some more specific language for tethering of animals, as well as what constitutes animal care.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I just referred to tethering dogs. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. In my neighborhood, I live off of like your country club. Many of my neighbors believe that our dogs chained 24/7 outside in the elements. And they, a lot of times the dogs don't have enough water, or maybe they do have water, but then it gets knocked over by the chain. I've gone into people's yards to give the dog water because I've seen it for like a full day, and the dog are not getting any water. And I thought, some of the news articles I included in your packet do show real life examples of animals who would display more aggressive tendencies when they're consistently chained. That's been established.
Ma'am, I'm, go ahead and finish up the time.
That's okay. I'm so sorry. That, that's pretty much, and I included just some examples, um, for applying, like my request and for your consideration. I've never done this before, so I'm not really sure how this works. It's hard to bring this to your attention.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Is there any more, any more comments? Not for you. No, thank you, though. Thank you very much. Is there a motion for adjournment? Oh, well, we're out of public comments. Yeah. Is there any more comments for business? Motion for adjournment?